Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervised Meeting. June 12th is a continuation of yesterday's budget meeting on June 11th. We will begin by raising for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able. Sheriff, will you lead us?
Pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to your mother, for which she stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll dispense with announcements unless somebody has something they really absolutely have to say, and we'll move on.
You can put it that way.
It's a welcoming introduction, isn't it? And Clerk, do you want to set us up?
So today's item is from the Administrative Office. To conduct the fiscal year 2019-20 Recommended Budget Hearing, receive presentations on the recommended budget from the CAO and various department heads, and provide the CAO with direction for any requested changes to the recommended budget.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have been talking, I talked to Al this morning about how we might be able to move through this in an efficient manner today, and with your consent, what we were discussing was going through tab by tab, using the CAO's recommendation as our baseline, and then if there are additions or subtractions, they will keep track of it, and we'll keep a running total more or less as we go along. Obviously, this comes back to us in the final form at the end of the month. Does that work for everybody? Any objections to that? Okay. Al, do you want to start taking us through? I guess A for Administration?
Well, maybe that was a bad idea to start with mine, I suppose.
It was your idea.
That's true. I had mentioned I'm an extrovert, so when I'm speaking, I'm thinking at the time. All right. A for Administration. Pretty simply put, in our particular budget, the only request we have in ours or any significant change over a status quo budget is we do have a limited term position in our office. It would be the third fiscal year, I'm sorry, I'm not on here, be the third fiscal year that we've had this, coming into the new year would be the third fiscal year that we've had the limited term position. I understand the history behind the position and how it got started, but from a principled perspective, just sharing my own philosophy on limited terms, that by virtue of bringing them back on continuous fiscal years, they, by virtue of that fact, they aren't limited term, at least in my own personal view. So our most significant change in our budget is only a request for a limited term being moved to a permanent position. Other than that, what you can see in our budget is relatively status quo.
1.7%.
And with the exception of those things that were identified in our quote-unquote "status quo," including any natural salary progression, negotiated agreements if they affected our offices, and then of course, the per se lump sum.
And the position modification is a net zero.
Which position is that on limited term?
It's the limited term Administrative Assistant 1-2 position.
Is this, this is Monica or Tony's?
It's Monica.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't know if there's particular questions that we want to address.
Dennis?
Good morning.
Do you have stickers?
It says that salary benefits are forecasted increased by 8.75% as their assurance that we will not be every year coming back to the Board with a roughly 9% salary increase in your department. What assurances do we have?
The salary and benefits calculations are pulled through the system. Those aren't things that we've made adjustments into ourselves in our particular department. That which you see coming through in salary and benefits is applicable across all of the county positions. Those are being driven by any particular negotiated agreements, if they had effects on our office, natural salary progression, potentially even my position, my hire being built into the salary and benefits. So those aren't drivers that I particularly input from my department's perspective, if that makes sense.
I just, I know it's going to become difficult for future Boards to face a 9% year-over-year over year-over-year increase in salaries, and how they would, how they would be capable of responding to it and provide the backup, financial backup to support it.
And we lay off.
Well, and that's why I come down to is that at some point, if we, if we're going to be running in that levels, are we going to be eventually talking about salary caps? Are we talking about layoffs like Twalney County? I mean, what, there will be a junction point here that somebody's going to have to face. So we have to be very careful and cautious as we look at these with our staffing levels so we don't put ourselves beyond our capability in the longer term if the economy softens.
Absolutely. Your points are well taken. I tried to touch on those at the end of, you know, my quick analysis of the budget yesterday. There are some recurring themes that if we aren't active about looking at enhancing existing revenue streams, generating new revenue streams, then we're going to have to be active on the expense side of the equation. And there's any variety of ways that we can look at addressing the expenses, but those are, your point is well taken, but as I see them, those are countywide, those aren't necessarily driven by just my particular office's budget. We're not adding in new positions or anything like that that's driving that. These are, these are natural increases that are going to happen throughout the county, and we'll have to have a global approach to your very points.
Thank you. And moving to page 62 of the budget book, there's been a concern, and I know that I voiced this over the previous two years, and it has to do with resulting in major, near-major system failures as a result of deferred maintenance. We're talking about, eventually, we're not going to be able to get our 22 gas for our HVAC systems, and that I certainly would not support buying a bulk group of HVAC package units to fix the problem, so to speak, and then down the road, we've got this entire bulk to have to replace. I'd rather that they be staged in and we be looking at the most critical ones first, and be sure that we can get control of this before we literally run out of gas.
So this is a bit of an introduction to what I'll talk about in my 90-day assessment in the report on focusing on priorities, but one of my initial assessments in the six weeks I've been here is, and coming from my past life, we were pretty active about this, is that we have what's referred to, at least in education, and I think it maps over here as well, that we have a total cost of ownership for all of our facilities, that we analyze on a building-by-building basis, what is it going to take to keep that building up to speed, not only in daily operations, but in all our important mechanical systems, of which usually HVAC is one of the first and most important issues. We do have aged roofs, mechanical systems, and all the systems that support are mechanicals, and it'll be one of my goals that I come back to ask you about, and hopefully you will, as you just did, ask for a plan, a year-to-year plan on how we're going to invest in the facilities, so that we keep them operable rather than be reactive to when an HVAC unit goes down. And I know some of that work has already started, so please don't infer by what I've said that I see it as a gap that we haven't done it to date, it's just we haven't got the total cost of ownership all the way to completion, and that's really something that you should expect. Because if we are reactive, we're paying sometimes triple as much to have a roof fixed or an HVAC unit fixed. So it's in my goals, it's something that I'll push out to you. Staff already knows about it, they're not hearing this for the first time from me today from the DIAS, but it's absolutely critical that we address that in our future budgets.
I can tell you, I enjoyed emergency calls and weekend calls on HV.
They're money makers. They can be a local economic driver, but it's the expense of public dollars.
Something else, just because of the fire background, I walked the campus, you do realize that every fire extinguisher in the campus has not been checked.
I don't realize that until now, but it'll be certainly something that we-
You could go to the one just outside the door here, and there's no, they have to be checked, and if we don't do it, there is an OSHA fine that's attached to that, so this is-
Can you discuss some of those things that came off?
Well, I just consider it is part, it is part of facilities, it is part of budget. Eastern San Joaquin on page 64, I don't know that the 4974 is going to be adequate for that particular section, and I know Krista, you had a couple of slides that you wanted to pull up on that. And I did hand off to County Council the agreement that they're trying to pull together for this, and this Board is going to have to face not only the agreements that are coming up between now and January, but also the costs associated with that, so.
Which slide would you?
Which one was it, do you remember?
I think it was 22.
And 23.
While we're, while we're waiting for that, I just want to let you know we are experiencing difficulty with the video, and we're working on it right now, just so you know.
We haven't, we haven't paid the remainder of our original agreement with Eastern San Joaquin. There was two years, and there was like $19,000, it was outstanding from that agreement for the development of the plan. But what we're talking about here is we're talking about what is it going to cost this Board or this county to be involved in this after the plan, when the monitoring begins, and when we need to be in compliance. And substantial compliance with any one piece of the East Side, Eastern San Joaquin will mean the entire basin will be out of compliance, and the state will step in, and they have some very onerous responses to our failures. So I just want us to be aware of that.
Krista, the initial page was six, that Supervisor Mills wished to start on, page six? And then it had some Board requirements that you wanted to view, Supervisor Mills?
Yes. So this is, this is to give us an idea of the timeline that's going to be required, and this is something we'll have to set up as an agenda item for later, but just to know that there will be expenses involved in making this particular slide happen for us. So the other one is 22-23, so we can also see the financial impacts. Be the next page beyond that. So although there were grant monies involved in the establishment of the plan, they're going to be asking us to even look at a possibility of finding a funding source for our portion of it, for the East Side GSA, and we'll need to discuss what that funding source is going to be. Are we going to be charging property owners within that portion of the basin, et cetera? So that's why I'm saying this, 4974 might be way off in terms of what it could be for us. I just want us to be aware of that.
So are you recommending that we increase it?
Absolutely.
To what?
I would like to see this at at least $25,000 for right now, and it might go to more along the lines of $50,000 initially before we get past that first year of monitoring.
Do you think it's best to try to set this aside now? Should we do this out of contingency?
No. Let's go out of contingencies when we know more of the total, let's not anticipate this.
Don't put that in.
Don't put it in, just be, I want the Board to be aware of it.
Okay.
So that we don't, we're not surprised when it comes down the pike.
We have some time until 2023, correct?
For, no, because monitoring actually will start in 2020.
Okay.
Let's just hold this idea in our heads.
Yeah, just hold it in our heads.
It's coming.
Okay. I noticed that Economic Development, is she here this morning? No. She didn't ask for a position.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. She actually put the salary in the, in the financial system and made the correct request through the salary where the disconnect is, is in their text or their Word document that they submit. She didn't include one FTE, but the salary is actually in the budget, there wouldn't be any net effect for updating that form to say one FTE in that department. There's no add to the budget if she updates the Word document.
Right. I just, it was a note. Professional and specialized services going to $37,241 again, we only spent, this is page 72. We had only spent $521 year-to-date this year, so is there an expectation that, what purpose do you think that you might be needing that much?
I'm sorry, give me the line again, please.
It was 5272?
Page 72.
On page 72.
I can't speak to that myself, although we didn't make an adjustment there for the most part, and, oh, I'm sorry.
I believe, off the top of my head, and trying to remember back to-
I won't quote you.
I believe that is leftover from the Census project, so there was the associated revenue, that the Board had approved that grant, was it the Census 2020? I think is what it was. So only a portion was expended and claimed this fiscal year, and then there's a rollover portion, there'll be expenditures and associated revenue coming in from that. I believe that's what that's for.
And I'm following up with Catherine as we speak too, to see if she can come over and speak to that if there's more questions.
But I think that was the primary piece of that, there wasn't much else that was going on there.
In the Economic Development budget, that's correct.
Yeah.
On page 75, when we're talking about total revenue, there is a 17% increase over last year between department requested and CAO recommended. You're asking for more than a department?
Yes. So in this budget unit, this is our general revenue budget.
4721?
Yeah, so 4721 reflects two things. What was in the recommended budget is the $500,000 for our typical teeter transfer that's annually budgeted as a transfer into the general fund. In addition to that, we have the $3.49 million transfer that is being used to balance the deficit between our revenues and expenditures as the budget is currently contemplated. In the general fund summary, it's broken out from there, but that's the, that's the bulk of that difference. The remaining $45,000 that would have to circle back, it's escaping me at the moment.
So you're absorbing all of that into the admin budget?
Just as a functional matter, so it's not clear that we would, we're certainly hoping not to have to draw on it whatsoever, but as an accounting matter, Rebecca, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's how the transfers would flow.
Yeah, and the $45,000, so what I did was went through those kind of special revenue funds that are sitting off to the side and reevaluated them, and there is a, there was a fund that's been sitting there for years that I've, I think I've worked with four different CAOs now, and multiple people to try to figure out where the money came from, what it was from, if there was any restrictions on it, and we have decided just to go ahead and pull it into the general fund and close that particular one, and it was 40, I think it was $45,001. So it's just a one-time transfer into the general fund, because I think in this, I think the money goes back to like 98, 99. So there just hasn't been an oversight on that particular dollar amount, and no one can, can figure out what it, what it really stemmed from. Our financial system goes back to 99, so prior to that, you know, I guess I could call Tom Tryon and see, I don't know. But, so we just thought, let's just put it to rest, so that's what that is, and yeah, and then everything else really stems from those transfers coming in.
Clerk, with us, I'm reading mine now.
You might know too. Do you remember some $45,001?
From 20 years ago?
Yeah.
Page 77, talking about professional specialized services at $712,000 versus, we spent $93,659 this year. This is on page 77. Page 77, line 5271.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat the question you were wondering why we have-
Professional specialized services. Are we expecting that because of some of the work that's going to be, needing to be done at facilities, that, that's going to require that additional amount?
Bonnie, come over here.
Oh, here comes Bonnie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Bonnie Rich Administration. I apologize in advance, for some reason, I'm having a very difficult time today understanding you. Your question is about professional and specialized services in the facilities budget unit. $355,000 of that is for demolition of the old jail. That is not deemed a capital project at this point, it is not something the Auditor's Office will be able to enroll as a project, that's why you're seeing those costs in the facilities budget. That's a big chunk of that. The remainder are ongoing routine mowing, electrical, plumbing, maintenance work that we need to do to the facilities throughout the year, but a big portion of that is, yeah, the demo of the old jail.
Okay, because it's a substantial change in number from the $93,000 that we spent this year so far, to bump it up to $712,000, $355 is part of it, but not all of it.
Correct.
Can I add?
Sure.
Line item 5190, county facilities maintenance, you have $150,000 in that line item, I was assuming that was for maintenance, for facility maintenance, but you are also including some of the $712 on line 5271 as facility maintenance?
Facility, 5190 object code is primarily for the parts and the materials and the supplies that the Division needs to perform those maintenance functions.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Chair, that's all I have.
Mr. Stoppard? Supervisor Toffler?
Sorry.
All right. So no additions or subtractions on the administrative budget?
Yeah, I do have, I do have a comment. I noticed as I went through all of the budget here, I noticed that the administration budget was the only budget that the requests, department requests, and the CAO recommendations were unchanged. Whatever the department requested, you said okay to, so I just, unlike all the other departments, were you?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a, that's a fair point. Quite honestly, when we went line by line, I didn't go line by line through every one of ours as a matter of priority. I set for our staff some interest that I had in maintenance and those other things that we need to get done in facilities as an example, and some priorities, and as we were going line by line, learning the budgets, I focused more on the others. I didn't mean to give a preference to Administration in that way, but it's, it's a fair point.
Maybe that would be time to ask a question about whether the page 85 contingencies, where that one, page 85?
Page 85.
There's only one line item there. Is that going to be enough, or do you feel that that might be a little low?
So the numbers down from last year clearly, yeah, in a substantial way, as I know CAO Alt has explained, and we're all well advised, the county's been functioning with a deficit for the past few years, we're still feeling that here, unfortunately, in this current projection for the next fiscal year, we did need to reduce that contingency as opposed to, say, releasing general fund reserve, and that was the recommendation at this point, pending more information when the fiscal year enclosed comes to fruition, and we actually know where our ending fund balance is. So while not ideal, we're certainly hopeful that that will be sufficient.
Do you think, maybe this is a question for the Auditor, that this is going to drive some additional requests from your side to help backfill on requests?
I guess I'm trying to understand what your question is, so.
Well, the point is, if you, if you don't have sufficient contingencies, you're going to need to come to the Board to help backfill those additional requests, if you don't foresee that there's going to be a need?
There's lots of needs, the problem is we don't have the resources to fund them. We're, we have $4.2 million of projected cash carry for June 30th. When the department requests first were rolled in, all put into Open Gov, we were between, for the general fund, the difference between the revenues and the expenditures was 8.2 million over, expenditures over revenue. So when you're 8.2 million, and we only have projected 4.2 coming in to shore that up, we have a problem. So what Administration did was, as best they could, try to take those department requests back down to as close to status quo as they could, with the understanding that the natural salary progressions and the things that had been negotiated, the per se lump sum would be in there, and then being mindful of the priorities as CAO Alt had mentioned. You can make, the Board can make the contingent whatever you want to be. The Board kind of established a policy that we should be about 2%, 2% is of the general fund expenditures, I think is like 1.59 something, so it's 1.6, it's rounded up. Do I think that's sufficient? You don't know. But the flip side is, if you don't think that's sufficient, then we have to cut somewhere else, because there's no more money coming in from anywhere. We've accounted for every tax increase, every TOT increase, every sales tax increase, every property tax increase, if there was an increase on contracts for services that we would get revenue, we increased that. We, we looked for every piece of revenue that we possibly could, we looked through funds that there might be a balance, like the $45,000, and said, let's pull it in. Let's pull in any resources that we can possibly pull in. We've done all of that. So outside of there being some, you know, and you hear me say this in prior Board meetings, four-leaf clover fall out of the sky where I get a deposit coming in that's unanticipated, and then all of a sudden, everyone stops submitting things to my office for accounts payable to be paid between now and the end of the fiscal year, great. But everything that I'm seeing is probably, we're going to be pretty close to what the projection was, which is about 4.2. Now, that could swing, because if we end up getting these unanticipated revenues or claims that we didn't think were going to come in this year and end up coming in, all you need is a half a million on the revenue, and a half a million on the expenditure, and there's a million. That's still only 5.2. So no matter what, we're transferring in 3.3-
3.5 approximately.
3.5 from teeter. So, and we've got 4.2 that's, that we're projecting for cash carry, so it's not tying out. So it's, you know, it's kind of think of it as a pie, we can only cut it into so many pieces, it's still the same size of the pie. So whether the contingency should be higher, lower, general fund reserve should be higher, lower, whatever you want to do, it just means it's the same money, we can only spend the dollar once, so you're going to have to shift priorities and resources from somewhere else.
And that was the reason for this conversation, is the previous Boards had set that 2% threshold, and I just had made a note here, I felt that that number was too low.
So do you want us to?
I think we, we need to probably discuss whether or not we're going to accept that lower number and the risk associated with it, because there will be a risk, or whether, because this Board's just going to have to decide whether they're, will accept the risk.
And I think that's a good discussion point, but I think making any other adjustments towards increasing it or decreasing it is probably best to be held at final, when we've got final numbers, the assessor will have closed the roll by then, and we'll have a better picture of where we're entering.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to discuss it now, I think that even if we get past final and we go between final and September, we get a better look at it, but at some point, I think between final and September, this Board still needs to have that discussion as an agenda item, and set some type of policy.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, you know, this page does not show how much we dipped into contingencies during the year. There's no, there's a blank on that line item. But I know that we were pretty extravagant. Even at midterm, we dipped into it to close to six hundred thousand dollars. And so, and during the year, a couple of times, it was brought to us and we dipped into contingencies. So, I'm guessing it was somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars, close to nine hundred thousand, just by memory, of what we dipped into contingencies last year. Going forward at one point six, budget department heads need to know that we're at the minimum that we require through our policies, that if they're going to come to us for something out of contingencies, we're going to be very strict because we have to. It's not going to be like previous years, the last previous years, where we've dipped into it quite a bit. And we've done that in the past. We've been as low as one point two million, I think, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
One year, I recall, at recommended, and I went home and shut up a few chairs, I think it was sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it might have been somewhere around that.
It was awful.
So, we have to remind ourselves of that and everybody on campus and all the departments that we don't have it. It's going to be very critical if they come forward and we spend out of contingencies going forward this year. And that's to make up, and I agree with the CAO, Mr. Alt, that it's from the previous years, and I had a discussion with Tim last year's budget on that. I think Rebecca and I had some conversations on it also.
Yes, and the reason we, the strategy behind having such a large contingent for eighteen nineteen, the reason we wanted over three million dollars in that contingent is because we needed that money in order to budget for nineteen twenty. We knew that the budget was upside down when it was approved by nine point nine million dollars, and that's not sustainable in any way, shape, or form. So, we needed to basically pull as much money as we possibly could in that contingent. And I know Gary and I talked, and I didn't even think what was in there was sufficient. I wanted half of the, I wanted half of the cash carry put in that contingent because then we would be in a better position for nineteen twenty, and then potentially, we could roll into twenty twenty-one kind of as a soft landing. And in the meantime, and this goes back to me, you know, broken record, working on revenue generation and expenditure reduction between that two-year period, because it takes a really long time for us to increase fees or pass a new fee or do anything. So, it wasn't going to happen really quickly. So, if we had a very robust contingent, we would have a soft landing when we got to twenty twenty-one. That's why we wanted such a large contingent for eighteen nineteen.
Rebecca, I really don't want this to be just a discussion during the budget. That's my point, and that this needs to be brought back as a separate item so that the board can focus on that and that alone and start to develop some type of a strategy that we can use going forward.
And I think that CAO and I have talked about that extensively, and that is something that we both acknowledge is very, very important and needs to be done. The budget isn't something that you guys pass and then we stick it on a shelf. We need to start working on it immediately to start coming up with some strategies.
Supervising Mills, I think that when we do the ninety-day assessment in July, that should be, you know, that sort of kicks us in a more strategic moment. And to utter a controller's point, we have to work on budget year-round, and we all know that.
And we're not doing that.
And we're going to, new day.
Good.
All right. Guys, want to move on to the airport? Anything else on administration?
What I can speak to on this is essentially, this was status quo, for lack of a better term. We didn't make any significant additions here, mostly just a rollover from previous year.
Dennis? Yeah, is her fueling station going to come out of an FAA grant, or how is she...
I'd have to follow up on that with her, quite frankly. I'm not articulate on the airport at this point in time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, good morning again. Specifically, a question about the FAA grant?
Is the new fueling station she's asking for going to be done out of her budget, or is there an FAA grant?
They, the airport is currently, has just recently, well, there's two things going on. There is the airport layout plan, which is, was supposed to be completed last fiscal year, and my understanding is going to be completed this year. This is, we have to hire an outside consultant to assist in the airport layout plan, and the FAA requires that we keep that AOP updated every ten years. Separate and apart from that, there are airport capital improvement projects. And the airport has currently submitted a pre-application to the FAA for which ninety percent of any CIP project that is approved by the FAA is funded by the FAA, five percent by the state, and five percent local match. We will be coming back to the board, hopefully sometime this summer, with authorization to proceed with the actual grant application. I can tell you, in this fiscal year, the, if the board chooses to approve it, the general fund local match, we can absorb. I'm a little concerned about whether or not we will be able to absorb that in twenty twenty. Airport is an enterprise fund and is self-sufficient. However, their fund balance at this point is not sufficient to cover what would be the twenty twenty-one fiscal year obligation for that, in addition to the consultant cost. So, we have some more legwork to do, but we plan to come back before the board in the next few months to discuss that new FAA grant.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Sorry. On line forty-seven oh five, sales of aviation fuel. Last year in the budget was a hundred thousand dollars. This year, you moved it up to twice that, to two hundred thousand, but actual to date, she's only sold eleven thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we're almost through the year.
We're talking about the fuel supervisor, Toffenow? So, it's not ideal the way it's currently happening right now. We have a number of issues with the airport, but the way it works right now is the vendor that we purchased the fuel from, the airport manager will order the fuel, and as customers come, fly into the airport and use the fueling terminal to fuel up, those costs directly from the customer then offset the cost of the fuel that we purchased. So, what we see in the financial management system isn't a really good picture of what actually happens. But because the fueling terminal and the fuel are being handled by the same vendor, it's kind of a wash behind the scenes.
Okay.
So...
I don't understand why it's like that in the budget, if that's the way it works, because the line item in the budget doesn't, it's misleading.
Right, so, it is misleading. So, the problem is the, what you see in the, in the budget, and this puzzles a problem for my office every single year, is in essence, it would be like if you went and, and, I'm trying to think what's the best way to explain it. So, if you went in to buy a piece of equipment, but you were going to make money off of the equipment, so you net it out. So, it doesn't show that you paid a hundred dollars for the piece of equipment, it shows that you paid five because you ended up being able to rent the piece of equipment out for most of the year. So, the net was, it only ended up costing you five dollars for the whole year. We can't actually financially account for that because we're required to actually report the true value of the fuel and the true costs of the fuel. So, we end up having to work with Kathy Zankinella every year to go through all of her records for the year to figure out what were the true purchases of fuel, what were the true sales of fuel, and what were the true expenditures related to the vendor, credit card fees and whatever else. So, we end up having to do that posting at the end of the year as opposed to it happening all throughout the year.
Okay.
It's a good time.
As long as the expenditures, I mean, the revenue doesn't reflect on her budget, and we're using that revenue to balance her budget, otherwise we'll have a deficit. I mean, if it's apples to apples and so forth, I just don't want to see the two hundred thousand dollars over here in her budget as revenue and as offsetting anything that we're going to have to be going back into with the general fund to pay off because we don't actually have that money.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, yes, and what ended up happening for eighteen nineteen, we got the information so late from the airport last year that it didn't, or actually, this is for eighteen nineteen. So, eighteen nineteen, the eleven thousand six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, the reason that is what it is today is because we won't make that posting until sometime in July, early August.
Okay.
And so, that's every year. And last year, we almost missed it because we got the information really, really late. So, that would have really thrown you off because seventeen, eighteen would have looked like eleven thousand dollars, when in fact, we would have had to do accounting magic to make that all work for the financial statements.
Okay, so, when we come back in July, hopefully those numbers are posted. You have that information?
Mm-hmm.
We can post those?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So, nothing left on the airport. CAO has requested that we, the assessor is not here, who's up next, and apparently she's on her way. He asked that we move ahead to the capital improvements projects. So, we're going to skip ahead and then come back to the assessors next. You had to do it well. You still want to go ahead with that? The assessor just walked in.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, and she says please to go.
Let's go to the assessor. CAO?
All right. Leslie, you're on for this, if you'd like to walk through just the recommendations you've made in your budget.
I wasn't planning on making a presentation. My budget is pretty much status quo with the addition of a position being funded by the state grant. State grant is at risk. We were relatively unsuccessful in our attempts to recruit last year. We had a vacant position beginning July first. We had another vacant appraisal position beginning mid-September. We were finally able to hire one person in mid-April. Another person who we made a job offer to, their employer raised their salaries so that they wouldn't take our job offer. We continue to recruit. We have not been able to perform the work required under the state grant. So, I'm working with Department of Finance now to attempt to keep those monies and move them forward in time. I don't know how successful we'll be. I'm fairly optimistic at this point. Also made other requests. The CAO chose not to recommend them. I'm not fighting, so if you have questions, feel free to ask them.
There's no difference between the, on this document, no difference between CAO and department request. Who wants to go first?
Well, there is a difference.
There is differences.
Should I ask you, Stoppard?
Curious, the state grant position, that's for the appraiser three level. That's, and part of the reason we may not acquire the grant is...
We may not meet the requirements of the grant.
What are those requirements?
Of the grant. Part of the grant application was to estimate what that particular position would contribute in terms of increases in the assessment role. The reality is, an appraiser three should be able to do income-producing property. We do not have anyone who can do income-producing property. I managed to get four appraisals done yesterday in spite of all of the interruptions and your ongoing hearings. That's not going to cut it. That's not going to show any progress as required by the grant. So, it does not appear that we are going to be remotely successful getting an appraiser three in this county.
Income property would be commercial?
Commercial, industrial, large apartment complexes, things like that.
How many years are we behind on this?
I have set all of the twenty fourteen events aside because we've already missed the deadline for the supplemental assessments for those.
So, we're at the four-year maximum, is what you're saying already?
Exactly. So, we have twenty fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen that have not been done for commercial property, nor have any of those been reviewed to see if they should have been increased for decline in value analysis.
This, is this significant towards our revenue?
Could be.
And is it significant towards...
But it's not just, let me stop you.
Okay.
You can ask that question, but let me add, we are also two to two and a half years behind on single-family residential, and you've been told that over the years as well. And that could be significant.
Right. So, that's on both, both ends, you were saying we're significantly behind. So, irregardless, even if we don't get the grant, we're almost in need of a position for that so that we can actually start getting caught up? Would you suggest that?
I asked for a new position, and the CAO has recommended that position.
With the understanding that we aren't getting the grant?
I also have a vacant position that has not yet been filled because of difficulties with recruitment. I'm not going to play the recruitment retention game with you. I listened to an hour of it yesterday with the sheriff, as always. I listened to the district attorney. I really don't think you need to hear it over and over again. I simply want you to know that that is the issue that we're experiencing.
Thank you.
Where are we, I said, where are we recruiting?
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Supervisor Toffenow, did you want to go next?
No, that's fine.
Supervisor Mills, your line was on first. Supervisor Calloway?
Yeah, I think that some of these questions have been answered. So, I noticed there's a reclass of a position.
I'm asking to reclass an appraiser three position, which is vacant to a senior appraiser. We're hopeful that with an additional salary and with the status of the title, we might attract someone who thinks it's special and wants to be here.
Do you think that that would affect the grant if you did that?
I think if I can get a senior appraiser who knows how to do commercial and is experienced, qualified, competent, can hit the ground running, then it will help us meet the requirements of the grant.
The cadastral spec one underfill, do we have to look at that in a different way as the CAO to deal with that? Because that's been vacant for so long.
Actually, it hasn't been vacant for so long, it's been vacant for three days.
Three days.
We had a cadastral three position, we were unable to recruit at the cadastral three. Do I need to explain that?
No, I remember that story.
So, eventually, what we did was we recruited at the cadastral one, that's why it's called an underfill, and we funded training for that position. We were not able to completely train that position, and she got a job offer in another county department a few feet from our office and is making seven dollars an hour more than we pay.
Okay.
So, when I talk about salary problems, I'm talking internal equity issues as well as external equity issues. Did you want me to slide over to your question, Supervisor Calloway, or...
Please, go ahead. I mean, I'll start out with, no, because that's...
That's what you always say to me.
That's because I always say that to you. And I think Mr. Alt addressed, we addressed the equity issue, might have been on a one-to-one conversation, I can't remember. So, I think the county administrative offices, because your department's not the only one that has those issues, so just sidebar, I think that's going to be dealt with, and I don't know his plans, but y'all can talk about that on the side.
Okay. So, I shouldn't ask when, because I'll get the answer soon?
No, you'll get the answer when he decides that he's going to do that.
All right.
But it's an issue he's cognizant. But it's an issue he's cognizant of. Let me put that. And that Judy is cognizant of.
I would hope so.
So I just want to take that off the table because we've heard that several times.
I want to clearly tell you, it is on my table. It is not coming off my table. I'm simply not arguing with you anymore.
With me?
Anybody.
Oh, gosh, too bad.
I know.
I love it.
I'm sure that you're just crying inside.
I am. So what, yeah, yes. So on the position, just for the Appraiser for commercial, I mean, where do you go to look for a position like that? I mean, I can't...
Let me talk to you first about how we have done recruitment and how we've sort of altered over the years. Initially, we recruited locally. And I have the best experience when I hire someone who actually lives in Calaveras County and who is qualified to do the job. So initially, our recruitments were newspaper advertisements in the Calaveras Enterprise and the Union Democrat. Of course, with the whole change to social media, we've expanded, of course, to Facebook and HR is also pushing out on their website and doing a pretty good job. This year, I asked the recruiters to expand to local colleges. And I actually called out ULP, Chico State, Sac State, Fresno State, you know, a number of local colleges. Additionally, I will send out emails to all members of assessor's offices in the state who are part of an email distribution list, hoping that maybe we might steal someone. And I am regularly in Sacramento, and I talk to appraisers at the State Board of Equalization. Of course, the board itself bemoans the fact that they are losing people to other counties. But they are losing people to Sacramento and Yolo because Sacramento and Yolo pay more than the state. We are losing people to San Joaquin, to Stanislas, to Sacramento, and to Placer County. We are not losing them to your comparison counties. And when you look at what those counties pay, it is significantly more than what we pay. It's a heck of a lot easier if I were driving out of my driveway to turn left and go to Modesto or Stockton than to turn right and go to a different place. And so that's what we're finding happens.
It's not part of it. I was just curious on how you do, because it's very specialized work.
It's very specialized. We pretty much know the pool of applicants that we've got. I made a presentation at the Appraisal Institute's Northern California Chapter Spring Conference in March. And of course, during those types of events, I'm mingling and networking with fee appraisers, trying to see if anybody is interested in coming to work for government who might need the qualifications to be certified as an appraiser for property tax purposes. So there's a lot of personal outreach, at least on my part. I can't speak for my staff. They've got enough to do during the day. And then, of course, I'm pushing a lot of suggestions to HR. I believe that I have evidence now that they're certainly listening. The last application review for an Appraiser I underfill position, we did get a number of applicants who are fresh out of college. So I think that push at the college level is probably going to help us with entry level. I have a couple of appraisers who've indicated a desire to learn to appraise income-producing property. And so as soon as I can settle things down, get my brand-new appraiser trained, I'm going to pull them in for specialized training for that. If we're lucky, this is all part and parcel of succession planning within my department. If we're lucky, I can pull them along and we can start to see about improving that skill set at my staff level. It's just a very difficult thing to do. We're pulled in so many directions for so many different things that when I yank someone from something that, and you were just asking Supervisor Stopper about how far behind we are. If I yank them out of a production assignment and I say, now you're in a training assignment, I know long-term it's for the best of the office, but we're going to see some hiccups along the way.
What, I mean, going back to what's been asked, can we contract some of that out to...
I have the capability to contract it out. It takes forever to get through the county's contracting system. It is also extremely difficult with the CalPERS requirements with retired annuities. So I'd actually brought a retired annuity in a couple of years ago who was qualified and actually knew Calaveras County, used to work for Calaveras County. Finding somebody who's geographically competent is relatively difficult. Calaveras is its own county, and it's not like going to an urban county where you can quickly learn the grid system and get around where you need to be. So Calaveras is a little more difficult. There also aren't that many people out there willing to do contract work who have a, who are certified to appraise for property tax purposes. They're certified to appraise for fee appraisals. And this is a different world.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, let me continue that point because I think I had it listed here as role currency was the question. And I think that you answered that in talking with Supervisor Stopper. But this needs to be a focus because of the loss of revenues that we're experiencing as a result of the lack of currency of the roles has a direct correlation to what we're talking about with our budget. Number two is that when we seek contract work, and I have history on this one, is that you also, then one of your staffers becomes a babysitter. And I'm not so certain that that's going to result in a good conclusion either. So be very careful about wanting to go out and go in that direction. I also noticed on page 104 and 105 of the budget book that your 2017, 18 actuals are missing, completely missing.
I commend you on having no office expenses of last year.
Wow.
This current year.
So 17, 18, I went back...
You know, I hesitate to say that's true because my staff keeps coming to work. And if there's one thing I know, they're not doing it for the smile on my face. They're doing it for the money in their checkbook.
Well, I was able to go back to the previous budget book and pull up the numbers for last year, but for this year's actual year-to-dates, I have nothing. So there's no way to correlate between what you've actually accomplished this year and the requested and recommended. So there's a disconnect here.
Krista, I can't answer that.
Yeah, we apologize. We had some data flow-through issues. I think CIO Al explained the relationship between our financial management system, OpenGov, and Warkiva. And there were some issues importing that data with respect to the historicals that clearly was not a result in this budget unit. Although, I think the auditor would agree with me here that we did confirm all of the totals, et cetera, throughout the budget book. So the numbers are good, but there were a few issues here and there that we were not able to resolve.
This isn't the only one.
No.
Well, if I could then just basically tell you how I pull my budget together because I think it bears conversation, even though hopefully it's not that much different from what anybody else does. Admin pushes our employee costs into the system. I immediately sit down and calculate it myself, simply to be sure that any longevity bonuses, any projected step increases, or any changes in their benefits are reflected accurately in what they call the PCF and what we used to call the BEC. So I do an immediate reconciliation with that. I will say that this year, not last year, but this year, it was such a minimal difference that it didn't bear a conversation. The next thing I do is I run year-to-date on my current year, and I look at a two- or three-year history of how we're doing on every line item. And then I consider where I need to make adjustments. So for example, this year, I know I'm going to have an infusion of new staff. They're going to be appraisers. They're going to require continuing education. And so my training and travel budget naturally increased as a result of that. So what I did was I sat down and contacted the State Board of Equalization who provide classes, contacted others who might provide training opportunities for us, and attempted to determine what each of our trips might actually cost and build that into those line items. Where I am a little bit concerned is with postage. As you know, postage goes up. We don't have a lot of control over that. I'm also a little concerned with gas and oil expense. My gas and oil expense has actually been much lower than I've expected recently. But I think that when I fill the appraisal positions and I start having competition for the vehicles getting out in the field, I'm going to see gas and oil expense go up. My, I have four vehicles. Two of them are at end-of-life. They're going to start costing us more. We're probably going to have to come back, perhaps at mid-year, and ask to purchase two vehicles. I do have a trust fund for that, Marita. And additionally, I'm just a little concerned about how some of our other, of the larger costs are. So forms and printing tends to get a little bit higher with very little expectation. But for the most part, if you look at our line items, they are running fairly consistent. I have a regular schedule for turning over computers. I do one-third of the office every year. It seems to be about the time that we start having computer problems, so the timing is good every three years. I know what my licensing agreements are for software, and so all of that is built into those individual line items.
Maybe the question isn't for you, but more for the CIO, is what's the cost to turn over a computer?
Per computer?
I'm talking off the top of my head. Stan has done a projection and provided it to the departments as well, but I think it's about $1,200 per unit.
Per unit? That's something that I think the board needs just to be aware that there is, it's not just put a computer somewhere. There is a cost associated with...
And I haven't seen the detailed report, but you heard me speak to total cost of ownership to facilities. The same maps over to our technology as well. I know Stan has worked on that. The department heads probably know better than I. He's pushed out a schedule to the department heads, and you'll see there are some places where the increase in their technology budget was as a result of Stan and his department pushing that out as a need. But it really is something that we should look at again in our ongoing processes, that those are the types of things that if we don't fund in the budget upfront, along with contingencies and reserves, then we end up never getting them. That's along the same lines of the discussion of the patrol vehicles as well. It's really hard to pay for those things upfront when we have all these needs. But at the end of the day, if we don't pay for them upfront, we pay for them in arrears and usually pay more.
Correct.
Thank you.
And on those computer costs, I'll just tell you, I beat his costs every year because I usually do not replace monitors on that cycle. Monitors tend to last a good deal longer. This year, however, I replaced every monitor in the office. We started having cascading failures, and now I expect that I will probably beat his costs for a couple of years.
And lastly, this will be on page 103. I think it's going to be up to the board to decide where to budget the increases, whether it's going to come from Teeter, General Fund, where it's going to come from. So the board will have to make that decision.
Which increases?
We see the Appraiser III.
That's coming two-thirds out of the state grant, one-third out of the general fund, and you've already adopted a resolution saying you would do that. Additionally...
Assuming that we get the state grant. I mean, we could have proven anything, but if we don't get the state grant, then it's not going to work.
I have it at this point for three years. I just have to keep them on an even keel because we're not meeting the standard. A state grant would also help pay against the capital improvement project that the CIO is not recommending. And so you know, the HR director is not happy with me, but I'm not going to spend county money twice. I will not be bringing in workstations for anyone new. They're going to sit at tables outside my office until we're able to figure out how to do that capital improvement project.
Okay.
Do you have anything? Any more questions? Are we going to move on?
No, I have a couple things. What do we need to get? Is that grant money, one-time money?
It's three years.
It's not recurring?
It's three years, one time.
Three years?
The last grant program, there have been four grant programs. The third, the second grant program actually got me hired. The third grant program was, I know...
A second grant over with?
It's been gone for years, Marita. You made me permanent years ago. You can cry crocodile tears. I'm not crying. The third grant program was a pilot program where eight counties across the state competed for the money. This is the fourth iteration of this grant program. It was made available to all 58 counties, but there was a maximum put on it by the governor. I think that what we're seeing for most of the counties is they opted to go for technological improvements. I opted to go for staff and technology. So part of the grant money is going toward a scanning project so that we can get our paper files electronic. One of the things I've told at least board members like Supervisor Garimendi and Supervisor Mills is the one thing that keeps me awake at night is if a fire hits our building, we will lose the foundation of the assessment role. So part of the state grant is to scan all of our files so that we have electronic copies. That's why you see an increase in our rental, by the way, on that line item, is because we still have to hold those paper files for a few years, even after they've been scanned. But I do expect that grant to go for this three years, even though my colleagues are telling me they're having the same problem I'm having. Department of Finance is working with us. I expect that once we start to show improvement, Department of Finance will continue to see this as a positive partnership with county assessors. And we're hopeful, at least at the California Assessor Association level, that we will be able to maintain a good working relationship with Department of Finance and try to get the state to help the counties fund our departments. Because as you know, they're a partner in that property tax revenue. The money they don't have to backfill to schools is money that's coming from property tax dollars, so...
Absolutely, especially with the commercials and so on. Those are absolutely school dollars that could benefit the schools and more so Calaveras Unified, you know, the state's backfilling that, but if you go...
Calaveras Unified? Boy, whoa.
But on the Bret Hart side, they're actually getting more than what they need for backfill, so that would exponentially help out Bret Hart, would it not?
Bret Hart and Valacito are what they call basic aid school districts, so they actually benefit more from a rising assessment role than Calaveras.
Yes.
The state benefits with the assessment role increases as it relates to Calaveras and their Prop 98 backfills.
You know, in listening to your explanation, it's almost like a catch-22 because you're asking for more money so that you can put people in the positions to get the job you want done. But you're one of our biggest revenue generators, the biggest revenue generator for the county for the most part when it comes to the general fund, and our hands are tied without that money coming in already. So where are we at? How can...
Well, I think the board knows that I'm fairly conservative with my approach to budgeting. I don't ask for a lot of people. During our budget meeting with the CIO and the auditor, I was asked why I haven't asked for an assistant assessor, and the reason is I'm pretty conservative with the approach I take. I really, I need my appraisers and my assessment staff filled, trained before I start looking at some of the management positions that we need. Now granted, those position, that position being vacant causes some obstacles as well because that's been our tech support, if you will. But the fact is, what I've asked for, the CIO has been kind enough to recommend. Happy with that staffing level. I'm not happy with the capital improvement project. This is what it is. My problem is not, right now, what the budget recommendation is. My problem is getting people to take the job and stay here.
Understood.
There's no other questions?
My question, I guess, would be directed to CIO or maybe even Judy. Reading the narrative that's presented to us, she's requested for a reclassification of Appraiser III to a Senior Appraiser. The Appraiser III position is currently vacant, and I'm looking at her budget and her salary and wages. I'm assuming we've carried that money during the year since it's just vacant. Yet, when I'm looking at what you're proposing, if we're already carrying that, you're adding another $91,000 for Senior Appraiser when it should just be the difference, not the full $91,000. If we've been carrying that and you have an increase in her salary and wages from 929 to 945, so I don't see it separated out of there and brought down here. So I don't know what the difference in the cost is. And then she's asking to reclassify Assessment Technician 3.4 to a new series titled Assessment Analysis 1.
Assessment Analysis One-Two, which I don't see any costs associated, whether you've agreed to that, or it's on your list. So I don't know what those costs are. I'm assuming the full $91,000 is not, because we've been carrying, and she's the Assessor Three, and she just wants to upgrade it. That's what the narrative is saying to me, so I don't-
And I apologize if I wrote it in a way that's confusing, Supervisor Toffenely. I am asking for one new position.
You're asking for one new position?
One new position, and that cost is reflected there. I'm also asking for reclassifying an existing position to the Senior, and that increment is added to the cost of the one new position. Partially offsetting those costs is the state grant. And I think Krista can probably point it out to you faster, but it's in the line that says Transfer From Designated Fund 4721. Part of the offset on that position is the state grant, and that's the Transfer From Designated Fund.
I wanted to-
So we are reflecting the increment, increase from the Appraiser Three to the Senior, plus the new position. Wouldn't have been fair to ask Judy to know how I pulled that-
That wasn't clear on the narrative, I just wanted to clarify that stuff.
I apologize for not being clear enough.
All right, okay.
Might I suggest, at least on behalf of myself, but I think all department heads, if you've got this kind of level of detailed question, give us a call, we'd be happy to go over it with you.
One last thing. I'm sorry, go ahead. So we got this 4721 transfer from the designated fund in here, and we don't know if we're getting that money yet. So that's potentially, I mean-
We do know, I do have an agreement, I have a signed contract with the Department of Finance, and I have your board's resolution from last summer agreeing to fund your portion. Okay, so we do know. What I want you to know is, we are at risk of having to potentially pay it back if we're not able to recruit people to do the work.
Okay.
We may not have expended it all, so we may have money sitting in my trust fund to help pay it back, but we are at some risk.
Okay, understood, that's-
Again, I'm sorry if I'm writing this or saying this in a confusing way, I understand that, that it can get confusing.
Okay. I have one last thing, and I would never presume to tell you your job, you're an assessor, but if there is a method, and I don't know how this whole works, but if there's a method or outside firm or something, and it could catch us up, and it was in function of us coming up with $100,000 to earn a million dollars, I can speak only for myself, but that'd be something I'd be very interested in. Because if we get caught up, then you don't have to keep playing the seesaw game, we could just have what we have and move forward. So if you ever have a proposal on that, I'd be very interested.
Tell you what, if you get two more votes that come in my office and say we're behind that, I'll start actively looking, but without three votes, I'm not looking for a way to spend money.
I don't think anybody up here would be hesitant to help you catch up, because that's going to increase all of our revenues.
Yeah, I'm seeing nodding heads, I don't know if the camera's catching it, I'm going to clip this part of the film and see if it-
Chair, do you want to poll that? You want to poll?
If you need a poll, we will, but whatever it takes to get you caught up so we could generate revenue, I'm assuming, speaking for myself, it'd be a priority.
Thank you.
Because that's money we need, and it'll also help you and your recruitment, because you won't need people, hire people to catch up, we'll have enough to manage where we're at.
I concur.
Thank you.
I do, too.
And so do I. And it's verbal.
Marita? No, I know I'm-
Hey, four ones, a win on this board. Okay, we'll keep moving forward. Auditor Controller, are there any, since we're not doing presentations, we'll stick to questions. Questions from the board on this budget item.
If I could, before you present some questions, I wish, in our process, I'd have been a little bit cleaner in terms of pulling out. In the narrative, the Auditor Controller had initially asked for a position, but as we progressed through, and she gave you the detailed analysis of where we are, and as she was working through her own request in the context of a larger budget, she voluntarily pulled out the position. Our narratives have already been set, and they come to print, but it should be noted that she requested herself that I not recommend that position, and had we had an opportunity to withdraw it in a more formal way, we would have done that, so. Well, that was in our dialogue, though, I did recommend it, but she came-
Yeah, it was in our, in our- I'm not saying I don't need it. I'm saying we are at risk for not meeting a mandate, for sure. That potentially does cause us bond rating issues, it causes problems if we wanted to go out and borrow. There's only so much that my staff can do, and I can do, and a new mandate is on the table that we're going to be required to follow, and I'm not entirely sure if I'm going to be able to do that. This position was basically going to facilitate that. The problem is the hiring of that position. It would be a new classification for the county. It's the same classification that Toowalome County uses for this level of work, but the compensation for that position would then basically push against my assistant, which then pushes against me, and it causes a compaction issue throughout my entire office and upper management. But I'm also cognizant of the fact that we are not in a good position right now. So my conversation with C A O Alt was, I'm willing to table this for the moment, but in essence, I, me personally, I'm going to have to figure out how I can get this work done. It won't fall on anyone else in my office, it's going to be me if I can get it done. And that's not a good position for the county long-term, because if I get by a bus tomorrow, find a new job, win the Lotto, don't run again, someone runs against me and I lose, I'm the one who is doing this, as opposed to actually having a succession plan in my office for long-term mandates that actually need to be done by the county. So I said, I'm prepared to go ahead and withdraw it at this point because we are not in a good position with the general fund, and I can acknowledge that, and I can appreciate that, and we will just try to MacGyver this thing together, to try to make it work for a temporary solution. But from a long-term perspective, it is something that is absolutely needed, and there are direct mandates behind this position. So it's not dead, it's not that, you know, I was asking for something that's not necessary or not needed or not mandated, it's just, I think this is the wrong time to add additional positions unless they have a funding source, or you're prepared to make some pretty difficult decisions long-term with funding them. So, you know, maybe having a further discussion of final budget, or having the discussion and a plan between now and the next budget cycle, it's definitely something that has to happen, but I'm also cognizant of where we're at at the moment. But you just have to know, if I can't get the work done, that is, there's consequences to it.
I know it's a very difficult question, we go back to recruiting, but even if the board agreed to, even though it's not being recommended, you're saying, and your explanation for your need for it, I understand. I think we've had this conversation before. Recruiting-wise, even if we had the position open, and it fully weighs $103,438, I'm not sure during the year, could we fill that position? Is there somebody actively out there as a senior?
There is no one at the county right now. So we would have to go external for it. The compensation would have to be set in par with what Toowalome County is paying theirs. The higher-level positions that have these type of requirements on them are more difficult to fill, for sure, but not doing anything because we're fearful it's never going to fill isn't, isn't the best option either. It's a position, you know, that Toowalome County has been successful in recruiting and successful in retaining, we're just right across the, you know, the pond from them, so I don't think it's an impossibility, but it's, we don't have people like that falling out of the sky, and I can't really think of anyone here locally that I would say absolutely they could fill that position. And even with that, there would definitely be training that would have to come from me, to at least get someone who has the capacity for this level, and then do training with them internally to get them where they need to go. But, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're pressing 20% into this budget. Supervisor Mills, what do you got?
5631, your capital improvement project, it was scheduled for last year, and hopefully we'll be able to get started on that this year, so that's a carryover.
Yep.
Admin is probably the one to be best suited to handle the R F P on this thing, or how it's going to go forward. I hope that you don't spend the time in your office with your staff, considering the level of work it's going to require. Something kind of jumps out at me on page 116. Line 5310 and line 5628 for budget and recommendations are identical numbers. Those always kind of stick out when I see the same number in two different lines. 5310.
Are you, which budget unit you're on?
Page 116. County Contributions.
Okay.
Calaveras Visitors Baril 5310.
Yep.
Is identical to 5628.
Yep, because you're giving the C V B a quarter of the T O T, and you're giving the fire districts a quarter of the T O T.
Okay, let's just, you know, in numbers, you always look for those things that look to be the same. And we've already got the explanation on the transfers out for roads, you and I talked about that yesterday.
Yep.
And the million-dollar difference on the next page, on page 117, in net costs, roughly, and it's broken out from lines 5730, 3137, and 44. Basically, when you combine those together, that would comprise that difference.
Which budget unit are you looking at?
Page 117, and net costs, the difference is nearly a million dollars between requested and recommended.
Oh, yeah.
County Contributions.
So that's county contributions, so again, that has to do with the T O T increases, the S B one M O E match for the roads. We pay for the surveyor and the M S four to Public Works as well. And what else? And our revenue is grossly tracking down for all court collections, so it's way down for county contributions. So county contributions is the collecting budget for all of the court collections that either stay with the county or help offset the county's maintenance of effort to the state for court funding. And we have seen a historical decline on court collections, and we're seeing it kind of reach the point of really being low. Low to the point that we're looking that we may not, normally what would happen is we would collect all of our base fines for the whole year, and in August, when we, I guess it's Aug, might be July, when we finally get all of our June collections reconciled with the courts, we would look at what our maintenance of effort is that is legislatively set, and then we, anything that's in excess of those, that maintenance of effort that we would have paid of base fines, whatever's left over, we split 50/50 with the state. And depending on what the court collections are, it could be 50,000, it could be 10,000, it just depends on what the court collections are. This year, we won't even meet the maintenance of effort, so we will not have anything to split with the state. That's the first time that that's ever happened in my entire tenure here. So we are seeing a huge reduction in court collections. The problem is those court collections that stay with the county are a funding source for our overall general fund operations because they're discretionary for most part.
Appreciate your explanation.
Other questions from the board? Your additions or deletions? Thank you very much. The, in talking with the C A O, our building official and other questions on that is meeting with the fire chiefs right now, so if we're going to skip that one right now and move ahead to C I P, Jeff can be here to answer questions.
And he is aware that there are questions. He came in and let me know that he, once he was done with the fire chiefs, he'd respond over. Moving on to capital improvement projects, I introduced this in a presentation yesterday. Really, the way I would describe it in simple terms is, I ask us to stand pat on those projects that you've approved in the prior year, and expect us to perform on those projects and get those moved through before we consider new projects. The assessor mentioned that her project wasn't put forward, it was a new request, and that's one of the ones that I pushed off. And so the list here that's reflected on-
135.
Page 135. Sorry, age is getting to me here, I need my glasses. That's what we're putting forward. If there's any specific questions about those projects, then Bonnie's here as well to answer questions on those.
Specific questions?
Isn't this what you and Gary are also on this today?
Part of it. Part of it, but not all. Supervisor Toffenely, do you want to start?
Well, I'd like you and Gary to update us on these projects.
I should, we should have the C A O do it, we're still starting up our process.
I will say, there's a possibility that we can give you an update within, by the end of the month, by the 28th of June. I think Patrick is involved in some things that we need to get update with the jail as far as progressing to have that torn down, and then some of the other projects as far as completing a law. But I think, I had a discussion with Bonnie in the hallway earlier today about that. So I think once we get some of that information and Patrick gets caught up here, we can have a quick meeting and then bring an update to the board sometime at the end of June, the 28th meeting or whatever.
My expectations with Bonnie and Patrick have been clear, we're all on the same page with this. We expect on the priority projects that we have, particularly with the jail, have a high-level project plan that shows the important milestones, and we'll present that to you at the next ad hoc meeting. With respect to the rest of the projects, we'll have a phased-in plan on when our anticipated start and completion is, and that'll be available for presentation. So you can fairly ask questions as to where we are, you'll know the status of whether we've started when we expected to, and whether we're going to finish when we expect to, but that's a fair expectation, and we certainly will need that.
I would like to add that, you know, the Public Works Office remodel, the $30,000, I cross that back with the Public Works budget, and that's non-general fund dollars that are in there, and it's already budgeted, so by including that, it's not going to change the bottom line on the budget, and since they've already got the money set aside for that, and it's not going to adjust the budget, I would like to include that back in.
Well, I mean, I thought you and Gary were going to be working with the C A O on making sure where these projects are and that they're moving along.
You are correct. One of the things that we ran into is, this is our second C A O, and he came straight into the budget five, six weeks ago.
That's correct, and him getting adjusted and getting online with department heads and giving him time to get settled in, plus jump right into the budget, we felt we'd give him some time and-
We're not going to beat him up on it, but he has a pretty good excuse.
So we will have a meeting, I had, again, I had a conversation with Bonnie this, in the hallway today about this topic, and she informed me that Patrick is doing some work and coming, and so we can have a meeting probably within the next two weeks, and we can advise the board on all of these projects near the end of this month.
So you recommend you skip this?
No, I would recommend, I would like to ask the board if they'd be willing to, because it's not changing the bottom line, include the Public Works Office remodel.
You'd have to, we'd have to sign a number to it.
But we'd direct staff to take care of that.
Do you want to poll the board for it?
Yeah.
No, I give, wait, I mean, but the issue that I thought, you and Gary, is making sure the projects are moving, and that you would say, these are the priorities based on whatever the board decided last year or the year before. So, I mean, I mean, it's not that I have a problem with it- So, I mean, I mean, it's not that I have a problem with this, but I look at all these and I just want to make sure the two of you are saying, yes, this is a priority project that we want done and we can get it done. That's kind of why we defer to the ad hoc, so we wouldn't be as a board micromanaging all this.
I must be forgetting, but part of the, you know, part of, you know, we, things were jammed up and not happening. So I think a large part of the ad hoc was to figure out how to unjam things and get them going forward. We don't have all that information, we have not gone over this list and set priorities. If we did, we'd bring it to the board. So as it stands, this is what we've got today.
So are you and Gary recommending that we approve the...
The ad hoc committee is not making a regi, we haven't got sat down as a committee, so I think we're all sitting up here as supervisors on this.
Can you only speak?
Again, Marie, it was kind of put on hold because of a change in CAOs.
No, 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 I understand.
And so we haven't met, and I'd say, in what, at least six, seven weeks, we haven't met.
No, 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 I understand that.
We've met a few, but yeah.
Well, maybe a few, yeah.
It was brief.
Brief, it was a briefing.
I understand that. Jack's asking us to approve this. I mean, it was the prior boards who made decisions, and I'm supporting that. I mean, I'm supportive of that. I just am saying we're adding this in. Is that something that the CAO, or Bonnie, or Patrick can all say can be accomplished this year? And that becomes your priority? Or is he saying it's recommended deferral because in the scheme of things, it can't be accomplished?
I'll make my recommendation a little more clear. These are the projects that we are recommending that be authorized. The next step in that would, that I would ask you, and I'll commit to, that we will put a plan for these projects together and how we'll fit them in the year along with our priorities. And if all of these projects can't be completed in the fiscal year that we're in, based on the plan that we put forward and the dependencies we have, we'll make that clear for you early on in the process. And Bonnie and Patrick and I have all discussed this in different ways. So we're committed to bringing a phased-in approach to this. And if at the end of the day, there are projects that we prioritize differently than what you may expect, the ad hoc committee will be able to help us rearrange the priorities, or they'll be able to see the timelines on where they start and where they should end. We can go from there after we see that. But right now, this, these are the existing projects that we think can be accommodated if we stay focused on them.
Okay, that's clear.
Doesn't look, you don't look like it's clear.
Again, very much talk, Supervisor Stoppa, would you like to start?
Yes, sir. I would be fine as long as that's already designated fund, that doesn't, doesn't take from the general fund, but it would come down to priorities and how those were put together, absolutely, which we'll be working on in July. I just, just looking at this, the bottom line here on total expenses and appropriations, last year, you approved budget of $6,500,000 approximately, and total expenses was $968,530 year-to-date. So a lot of that money is carryover from prior, some of it's like the DA's office that didn't get worked on and so on. But on the second to final line, the department, or the, the department request is 2.8 million or 2,850,000, and then the recommended's 5.2 million approximately. Where does that gap come in and why is there a recommended different than the...
Are you looking at the actual Schedule 9 Supervisor Stoppa, on what page?
138, bottom line.
Okay, in the...
The nakers in the back are getting this.
I think that... Hold on just one moment. Because I show, when I summarize, the department requested is 5.3 million, and what the CAO is recommending is 4.2. So I don't know if we have a data issue in Open Gov.
Oh.
Not this sheet. If you look at, you have all these parking lot that aren't, that weren't requested here, but they're showing over here.
Okay.
That's where the difference is.
It didn't transfer over.
Yeah, it didn't transfer over. See, jail facility cameras, they're listed here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Never mind.
Got it.
And I do have a question on that. And I'm looking at page 135, which is the outline...
Supervisor?
...of the projects. And the one I'm looking at is...
Supervisor Tofanelli, could you hang on, because I got multiple conversations coming in my ears from both sides.
I'm sorry, I'm on page 135. And I'm on line item number 5673, DA new facility. And we had an amount requested of $2 million. And the CAO recommends, recommendation is cutting that in half to $1 million. And I'm not sure if that's just, the million dollars is just for the removal of the jail and the plans and the project management of that and what, not the actual construction portion?
So part of this, we talked about yesterday too, this was originally in the department budget request as well, so we moved it over to CIP. The original request was 2 million, and that would be additional money. I think that our district attorney spoke to that yesterday, that if we want to do a capital project, that her understanding has been that you continue to put money towards that, and that was one of our requests. In this particular case, I'll let Bonnie speak to the specifics as to where we ended up and recommended.
Yeah, the 1 million is a carryover from prior year, I believe, and it's based on funds available within the judicial construction fund. So the million dollars is not inclusive of demoing the old jail, just on that side, is more in lines with developing the plans, specs, and engineering that needs to be done to get the new facility plan put in place. So if we need to increase those funds, we're not going to get all of that done. I mean, we are, but clearly not within the million or 2 million. So the intent was to set aside the million to get the big things done that we need to get done to get those plans together for Barbara's new building.
And we based the million-dollar estimate for the plans and for the engineering to come out with a set of construction plans to go out for an RFP with. And on what, what do we base the million dollars on? Is that just a guess, man, or just we'll set a million dollars aside for that? How, what if it's, what if it ends up being 1.7 million to get to that point? I don't know where we base that. Things should be based on an estimate that we've got to put a plan together for that.
Absolutely agreed. And if we discover that we need additional funds, we clearly will have to come back to the board and ask for that. I don't have an estimate. It was based on funds that I was told were available. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Questions? Supervisor Mills? Thank you. I compared this CIP list to last year's, and I found that there were 10 projects that were removed. I can give you the project numbers, but I also noticed that there are four projects that are added. So that led me to some confusion of the statement of, we're just going to work on the ones that we had from last year and try to finish those up when we have the shuffle that's happened between last year and this year. I have the budget book for yes, last year in the trunk of my car, I can go get it. But it's, I've got the numbers for each one of those projects that were removed, if you'd like to look at them. You had something to say? I'm sorry. I shifted off. Yeah, that's all right.
Barbara wanted to comment on it.
I apologize, Madam District Attorney.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the amount. I did address it very briefly yesterday. The $1 million figure is based on the estimate of what is in that particular fund that's been there for years and years. And I believe the auditor controller explained yesterday that there is interest being earned on that that's going into the general fund and has been going into the general fund. So we know that the million dollars is there, and it's been there, and it's just sitting there waiting for use for a new building. When we had discussions at the budget training earlier this year, you know, it seemed like I had to put something in that line to keep it at the forefront or so that it would be budgeted for this year, and maybe that's what happened last year because we didn't put anything in the budget for it. You know, it was kind of an unknown. And I'm in construction, I have no idea how much these things cost. So, but I am kind of guessing that a million dollars is not enough to get through the whole process, so I just put 2 million, I just, I just put it in there as a placeholder, that's where that figure came from.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Mills, would you be all right? I've got several requests to take a break before we come back to your question.
No, that's great, that's great.
Let's take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Welcome back. Supervisor Mills, you had four third questions.
Yes.
Before we get into that, if I may Supervisor Mills, real quickly, the question about why is the department requested number much lower than the CAO recommended? Krista reminded me, and I apologize, I know this, department requested was not fully entered into Open Gov at the same time department land submitted there. In fact, we did not include all of those because I had to wait to build those budgets until I had an opportunity to sit down with the new CAO to discuss what we were and were not going to put into that budget. So the data doesn't exist in the Schedule 9 because it wasn't entered by the time, at the same time all departments were required to put in their budget. So that accounts for the difference in the numbers. But the schedule is really reflective of what departments have requested and what the CAO has recommended. Now, having said that, just there is some truth to the fact that we are asking the board not to authorize new projects so that we can complete the projects that we've had on the books and those that the board has deemed a priority. Having said that, that is not a completely truthful statement. There are projects that are carryover from last year, there are a couple of new projects, and there are projects that we are deferring. Then there, in the narrative, you should also be able to see that there were a number of projects that were just completed. So there is a combination of those. So to say that we're just focusing on what we have on the books and doing nothing else is not a completely truthful statement. That is our intent, however, and while I cannot speak to the specifics, two big projects that the CAO is recommending, as the board knows, information technology is also a facility infrastructure capital improvement project. And there are two that IT has requested, and if the board is interested in hearing more about those, I believe our IT director, Stan, is here, so he can speak to those. I also want to point out that there is an entry on here. It is for the 1920 budget. It is project account number 5643, clerk recorder remodel, 66,200. That is for actual systems, furniture, cubicles, and that is already actually in the clerk recorder's budget, and that line item will be removed. So that is a Teeter-funded project that is specific to equipment and that is being purchased for the clerk recorder and does not qualify as a capital improvement project. So that particular line item will be removed. There's data cabling and networking associated with that project that we already have budgeted in CIP and/or facilities, depending on the value of those contracts. So I wanted to call that to the board's attention. And then if there are any other specific questions about the projects?
No, I think you pretty well answered this, is I just was having a disconnect between what we had listed for last year and what is on here this year without an explanation of what was completed, what was deferred, et cetera. But I had already written down the word duplicate on 5643, so that one was figured out. No, the four, there's four that are added here to this year, and I understand that they're critical. So I have no objection to them, I just was trying to understand why there was a difference between that last year and this year based upon the narrative. So thank you for your explanation. If there are no further questions, I'd like to poll the board if they'd be willing to include the Public Works Office remodel, since it's not general fund, it's already in their budget, it shouldn't shift any numbers. Put that on the list, get done this month.
It's in their budget, excuse me. It's in their budget using what funds?
I think they're road funds or reimbursement funds, but they're not general funds.
They're not Teeter or anything? I'm a yes.
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 I again go back to, it isn't the money in this case, it is the list of, the list of projects, are we saying if this, it's being recommended it be deferred because they can't get everything done? So if we're saying we want that to be a higher priority project, what is it we're saying that they're going to have to not do?
I don't think we're, I don't think we have the information to determine if this is a zero-sum game we're playing.
Then why are we saying we're going to add it on the list of honeydews?
Because if it doesn't get on the list, it's not going to get done this year, at all.
I guess, Jack, I don't know. I mean, I can't support it unless staff is saying, yes, we can get it done.
Can I recommend that we come back at mid-June?
Actually, we've already got a poll that we've already moved forward on. We have four votes.
So I'm asking you though, is what are you, out of respect to staff, what is it you're going to tell them they have to push it out of the way?
We don't know.
I mean, we keep adding, that's right, that's why you and Gary are supposed to help determine what you do.
Well, when we've got, when we, now we've got the CAO on board and we've got a budget, we'll be able to help do that. All right, is there anything additional, additions or subtractions on this? Let's go ahead with the clerk recorder and elections. Are there questions to the budget on this item? CEO, all you had talked about moving the Board of Supervisors under Admin and the clerk staying with the clerk recorder?
I'm sorry, is that a question, have I spoken about that?
No, have, is that something we're doing here, where we're keeping the clerk recorder, or the clerk to the board under the clerk recorder's office?
I'm not sure of the question. Are you asking if I'm suggesting a reorganization of who reports to whom? I haven't contemplated that at all or made any recommendations on any reorganizations at this point.
Okay, because I have on page 140 the narrative of clerk of the board related expenses were moved. Rebecca, can you explain that?
So at this point, I'm responsible for the board's budget and the county clerk's budget. So what I did to clean it up, half of what Diane's salary gets paid out of county clerk, and half of items related to her position get paid out of county clerk, and the other half get paid out of Board of Supervisors. For the ease of budgeting, I moved anything that was related to clerk of the board into county clerk, because that's really where it should be, and then left budget that was related to the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors. And then left budget that was related to the Board of Supervisors in the Board of Supervisors' budget. So I didn't have half of, half of the clerk of the board coming out of one budget unit and the other half of the clerk of the board coming out of another. So anything related to clerk of the board is now coming out of county clerk versus part of it coming out of Board of Supervisors. So I think what I saw was it was maybe $20,000 difference of items we are still paying for the clerk of the board out of the Board of Supervisors.
That's the direction that I was seeing too.
Okay.
And so that's why I have the note here.
Yeah.
Yes, I just needed to get it explained because it was a little confusing as to where the money was going to go. Thank you.
Any questions Supervisor Mills?
No.
No? Supervisor Toffenali? So if there's no further questions on the, on the county clerk and elections, move on to the next item. Coroner public administrator. Becky's running for the door.
I'll note out of the gate here that, oh, sorry. That this budget request will be reduced by $100,000 in professional and specialized services. So there is a net ask of about 27, 28.
Let's see if there are any questions from the board. Supervisor Mills?
I know, I spoke with Mr. Radjo and he was comfortable with his budget as it was presented. However, there seems to be a $100,000 difference on page 160 with net cost. And the $100,000 entered in error, removed, is supposed to be removed. Are we going to be removing that from the CAO's recommended numbers?
Yes, that's contemplated now at this point on our.
So that's $100,000 more that we'll have in the budget that we didn't know we had?
Indeed.
Because we're spending less than $100,000 less?
Correct.
All right, let's put an asterisk and a sticky.
Yeah, we just found one, didn't we?
Thank you, Cass. We'll spend it.
It's there.
So now we have 1.6 and some change in contingency.
Okay.
I say that facetiously, but my caution to that is while it's $100,000, we also have the discussion about contingency. And so, you know, it may be available to spend or it's also available for consideration in contingency or some other areas.
I was just joking. I would be very cautious with the coroner's budget only because of the number of times that he has come back at mid-year and we've had substantial.
Historically, he comes here during the year and asks for more money. Because of the autopsies that go out and outside and outsourced. And that was exactly my point with suggesting that we don't maybe allocate that to any new requests, but put that in contingency because that's typically where it's come from when the coroner comes back here.
I would like to be sure that that is board direction because it wouldn't take very many cases for him to blow that up. So I just want to be sure that we don't look at that as a cash savings. That's all I have.
Very well. No additions, additions or subtractions to the coroner budget? We will move on to the county council's budget. This is the only one Gary's got stickies all over.
Is she leaving the room now?
Questions from the board on the county council's budget?
Start with Supervisor Toffenali.
Supervisor Toffenali, do you want to start?
We're adding an attorney. I suppose a better term. Do you have a request to add an attorney?
Yes, I'm asking that the limited-term position, deputy position in the office, it's been there for three years, two years of which was by a funding source of the cannabis regulatory program. And then one year it was funded through the general plan, or general fund, excuse me. But now that it's been three years and it has been funded by the general fund in this last year, this position has been a huge support to a variety of departments. And for equity, for lack of a better way of saying it, I am asking that this position be converted to a permanent position now as limited-term positions are not entitled to step increases or seniority longevity for their time during their limited tenure. I think that with three years under the belt of the limited-term deputy, that at this point I'm asking that the position be converted to a permanent position. Hopefully that answers your question.
It did. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppert?
I would like to make a suggestion on that position and poll the board if they're willing to support me. That equity issue is something definitely need to be considered. So I would like to consider possibly for the time being and considering how we're moving forward with cannabis to see where we're going, that I would like to hold that position in, in the way it has been for the last three to four years, but move it to the amount that you have it here. What level is that, that you have it at in here that, for that type of work?
What I'm asking for is that it be converted to a permanent position as a deputy county council 3.
3?
3.
Is that person currently a deputy county council 2?
2, and that's why I'm asking because step increases have not been provided for. That is the request is that it be funded at the 3, deputy 3 position.
I would put my request forward as that would be funded in the same way, but separate from a permanent position at this time so that we can consider how we're going to move forward with certain things in the future. And we have a position open to work on that specifically if that's so the will of the board for a poll right now.
All right, poll is keeping the position as a limited term pending, you know, the outcomes of cannabis and other projects. See whether we're going to need this or not and whether we can afford it.
Yeah, and just another thing, a lot of our conversation and direction with the CAO's recommended budget is to deal with possible revenue coming in. And this could possibly work towards more, more revenue generating in the future. And we could come with a final decision on it. We might say, decide by September that this may be more of a valuable position in county council later. But for right now, I would like to poll to keep it separate so that we have avenues open.
And I did, before you take the poll, I did want to at least put this out there for the board to consider is that this position does, has handled over 18 RITS on behalf of the county and has currently over 15 collection cases pending. And so with collections, obviously that is a revenue generation for the county. So that is one avenue for revenue, not revenue generation for my department, but revenue generation for the county that this, this position directly is tied to.
Not fully taken it from you yet, Megan.
I know. I just have, I have to advocate for my position.
Do you have a poll before the board? Supervisor Calloway?
I can't support that. I understand what Ben's saying, but I'd like to respect what a department head, we've done it already today, taking positions from a limited term to permanent. And the, the issue he's talking about is an issue and that's going to be up to county council, the CAO and the board to work on. If the CA, excuse me, if county council thinks this position in terms of being appropriate, they've been here, as I'm hearing, for three years. And we've not been able to do anything to give any, whatever those conditions are under a limited term. Make it a permanent position and if and, no, not if. When we get cannabis regulation and cannabis income, then that's a different story and that county council will have to provide services to meet that need. I don't think we should be saying whether it should be moved from a limited term to a permanent position. So I understand the concept. I can't support the recommendation.
Supervisor Mills?
I can't either. I think that the, the department head really needs to have that decision capability.
Supervisor Toffenali?
Well, if he becomes permanent, does he not get isolated over, does he get to come into the rest of your office?
He will physically be staying in the office that he is because that is the space he has.
He is kind of isolated by himself. I would, I would, I understand what Ben is saying. And I'm not sure going forward what happens with the cannabis issue, whether that's going to be a difference on him, where the funds are going to come from to pay for his position. I understand what Ben's saying, but I'll, I'll go with what the department head and the CAO are recommending.
And I will, I will, I'm going to support Ben on this. I'm really hesitant about hiring additional professional staff and making that a permanent position, especially when we're going into kind of unknown waters. So poll, Ben, your most, your poll things.
That's a vote that I'm going to have to remember.
There you go. Okay, are there questions on county council's budget?
Yes. On page 165, they're talking about PERS employer at 163 versus CAO recommended at 81.
Yeah, that was a clerical error. That was a mistake on my office's part where we inputted numbers and the system inputted numbers. So there, it's the recommended or the requested is double. The recommended from the CAO are the correct numbers.
You know, I also wrote that same thing down for line 5056. I wrote X2 for the question mark. So the same thing there?
It's all of the.
All of the, all of the lines.
Correct.
Are doubled. Okay. And you mentioned that the A87s are significantly lower. Is there a reason for that? Or is there something that we need to anticipate in the future?
A87, well, any revenue from, in my department is kind of an unknown because we are not generally revenue generating. Because A87, we're working in two years arrears. There are impacts because two years ago we were significantly working on cannabis. And we were also working, heavily working on a variety of other issues in departments that are not A87 departments. And so that is, that is a huge factor in why, why the A87 was decreased.
Well, maybe this leads to a larger question for the auditor is, is that are the A87 costs, revenue's going to be dropping here over the next, trending over the next couple of years or what is the expectation?
No, it really just depends. So it, you know, you'll see swings specifically in administration and you'll see them in county council and you'll see them in IT. And the reason is, like county council, absolutely without question. Two years ago, what were they working on? And it wasn't just cannabis regulatory. They were having to deal with, you know, helping assist code compliance. Well, those costs would not be necessarily on the backs of the regulatory piece, but they would actually be on the enforcement side, which then falls into judgment or a lien on the property. And maybe five years from now we'll get it or maybe we'll never get it, right? Also, you have to think we had the PG&E settlement. That was a huge amount of time. We had issues in other departments that don't pay A87. So generally, general fund departments don't pay A87. So if county council, administration, my office, IT, HR, get in a year where we're inundated with doing work for special districts, general fund departments or activities where we can't recoup the costs, you will see it two years later and you'll see a massive decline in the A87 revenue. Because we can't pass those costs off, you know, to Kristen as much as we'd love to. We can't do that because that would be a violation of the program. So those things are always important to be mindful to say, you know, yes, board, you know, we're, we're prepared to work on this project or this program, but just remember there's no funding for it. So if we're taking expenditures, in our case, it's really staff time and utilizing it on these particular activities and projects, we're going to get it in two years later. I kind of call it the death spiral because then what historically would happen is we would all have reductions in revenue and then the board would say, well, you need to shrink your budget to make up for that shortfall. And then the more you shrink your budget, the less revenue you get in A87. So we've kind of moved away from that because we have tried to advocate for ourselves. Yes, our revenue is down, but here's why. So don't penalize me because we were doing work that needed to happen. It was, it was mandated by the board or there was a new program that was established by the board that we had to deal with. But there is not a dedicated funding source to offset that.
I just wanted us to be aware of the, of the impact that the A87 has on longer term. And that if we're seeing a trending, that the board needs to be aware of that as they're working in future budget years so that they know what's coming from two, excuse me, from two years ago.
So, so for instance, what I can kind of foresee in my crystal ball is let's say administration is able to actually get all of these capital projects going, right? And so that's going to be a real resource burden. Guess what? They're not going to be able to charge.
Right, right.
Two years from now. So.
She needs your ball.
That's where you'll see it. So it just really depends if you have huge capital events, if you have, you know, disasters that are occurring. There is a limitation on recouping those costs. My office, you know, also we, we see it as well because a lot of my time is being spent on, it was either being spent on cannabis or it was being spent on, on one of the declared disasters. And so I tried to cut myself away from the rest of my staff on what they were doing so it wouldn't impact us as much. But my salary did not, did not be able, we weren't able to recoup a lot of my salary.
Thank you for your explanation. Let's go back to council. On page 166, professional and specialized services, it was budgeted last year $673,000 and again this year, but we didn't spend a whole lot in actual year-to-date. Is there something coming down the pike that might require that you're building in here?
In the past, what we had done, we had multiple line items in past years. And I believe it was last year or the year before where we consolidated all of them into this one line item. That's why it's a lot bigger than what in, in prior years because they had been previously split, split into multiple line items. And there are, you know, with this line item, this is where we draw for any outside council assistance that we may need. And so there are, we can speculate. We never know what the county may be hit with. We try to use it as sparingly as possible. And we also try to keep things in-house when we feel that it's appropriate to keep things in-house rather than outsourcing. Because anytime we can keep a matter in-house, it's a cost savings to the county rather than outsourcing. This is the amount that we have. Certainly this, any kind of cuts that the, the board may look to, this is the only area within my budget that I could potentially see because of the unknown. Certainly if we are hit with something and it depletes this line item, I would be back to the board asking for more at mid-year. With the, the general plan is going to be coming before the board. Those are things that are unknown for outside assistance to assist planning, to assist with defending various actions of the board and just day-to-day operations with, you know, any assistance my, my office may need.
I just would consider that there might be an option here of maybe even a couple hundred thousand dollars to, on the initial for the final and then mid-year that we can take another look at it based upon what your needs are. Because at mid-year, you're going to know better what those, what those projections are going to be. So I would like to see a couple hundred thousand out of this based upon the spending patterns that have occurred, not just even to the 2017, 18, 2017, 18, but to 2016, 17, which I have again in the car. I don't see the spending patterns necessary to support that high a number.
And I think that, I think that some of the general, I think some of the, there is some blind item in planning budget for general fund for legal assistance.
There is.
In there as well.
Yeah, there is.
So it may not be as much. Do you want to put that in the function of a poll?
Yes, I do. I would like to poll to reduce this on the final budget by 200,000 with the understanding that at mid-year that it may be subject to a revision based upon need. But right now, we're not seeing the need.
Okay, you have a poll, Supervisor Calloway?
Mr. Alt, what is your thoughts on this?
Well, first is clarification. Reduce it to 200 or reduce it to?
No, by 200,000.
473.
473. I would restate what I did on the coroner's side of things as well. As if there's a reduction here, we put it in contingency, recognizing these are both needs. Potentially even the same for the DA request. same for the DA request yesterday for expert witnesses as well so that we're prepared and we, we can be expeditious for addressing requests.
I would concur.
And I just wanted to clarify, I know that there was a comment about, there is a line item about the general plan and planning. I know Peter and I do work and, we work together as far as outside council is concerned. Generally, the front end kind of pre-adoption assistance of outside council, we work with, with the planning and anything that is defending an action generally comes out of my department.
Okay. We have a, we have a poll before the board, Supervisor Calloway?
Again, Megan, what are your thoughts? It's like, yeah, it's just where people are shuffling.
It is. I mean, this number is, has been increased in past years and that was largely due to the Butte fire and the necessity that we had for outside council as it related to the Butte fire. Now that is behind us. We had previously needed that in anticipation for potentially litigation as it related to cannabis. We have handled a lot of the cannabis litigation in-house. There have been a few, few situations where we've needed to outsource things, but again, that is a situation where we've kept a lot in-house and that's why that number, that line item hasn't been utilized as much as we could have. With cannabis potential regulation coming back, this is going to be a situation where, again, either keeping things in or outsourcing, so to the extent that we can handle any case that comes in-house, particularly with this, the one position becoming permanent, we A lot of it is unknown. I would ask that it, that it be, that it remain what is requested, but this would be the one area if the board needs to cut somewhere in my, my department, that would be the only place that I would be a men, obviously, I'm going to argue against it, but if that is where the board is going to, that would be the only place that I feel that I could reasonably continue to operate, knowing that at some point, if we get hit with something, I may be back asking for more and as long as the board recognizes that and knows that that might be an option.
I don't think the issue is your budget. I think it's the total budget that we're looking at and I think Dennis is just saying, where can we grab some money? And with the understanding if you have to come back or the DA has to come back or Mr. Banner has to come back, you know, this is the way it is. We do the best we can at this point, so I'd support Dennis's recommendation.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffnelli?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well, considering we now have a new full-time attorney. It should reduce his expenses considerably.
Not many.
Is there anything else on the district attorney?
Yes.
Excuse me, county council, sorry.
County council. Page 165, line 95449, Mrs. Pers. She requested 163,686 last year to date. Expenditures was 126,433. We just added a new employee full-time and yet CAO's recommendation is well below what we expended this year, it only 81,000.
That was a, that, my request was a typo, typo, is a system error or error?
Even the actual year-to-date, because even the previous year was 114.
If I may. So, this was the year in which we worked, administration worked with the auditor's office to break out the fraction of the unfunded liability from the overall PERS line that we had used last year, 5049, in which they'd been essentially commingled. So, what you're seeing here and in each budget unit with salaries and benefits would be, so if you take 5048 and 5049, add them together and then subtract what was budgeted or year-to-date for a prior year, then you'll get the delta.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the county council's budget? Seeing none, we will move on. That is good. We'll move on to district attorney. Huh? District attorney made a presentation, but are there other questions or are we good to move forward?
I thought we talked to her yesterday.
We did. This is not, this is, we didn't go through, we didn't say, are we good with this?
I'm good with it.
Supervisor Mills, you had some questions?
No, I'm good with it.
As it stands. Supervisor Toffnelli?
Well, are we, given her presentation yesterday and the sheriffs, are, are we going to come back and revisit at the end of going through all these line items, the requests by department heads because her budget has the 32,000 that she was requesting plus the 2,000 and 2,000? So, we're going to revisit?
No, I think we do that now. I think let's do that now while we're going through with-
You want to go through her request now? Okay.
It's considered, and then we'll, we'll see at the end how our math works, but I think that, otherwise, we flip them back and forth and chill it to spend the rest of the day here. I'm sure she's got bad guys to go back-
I'm not asking additional, I'm asking that it not be cut out of my budget.
Yeah, you're asking not, you're asking for your recommendations. You, you requested 52,000. He, the CAO is recommending 20,000 on that line item. You would like us to stay with your request.
Right, and that's what I had last year, the 52,000. I'm just asking that it not be cut. It's supposed to be a status quo budget. I do think there's compelling reason not to cut it. I did not have a chance to advocate for that not to be cut with the CAO. Based on the timing of the meetings, I recognize that there was that difficulty with the timing. And as far as the 2,000 in training and the 1,000 in office expense, the recommendation is to, is to cut those out. I realize it looks, if you're just looking at that one line, that it's an increase that is now being cut, but it's not. I moved that money over from overtime, so it is a cut and I'm just asking that not be cut. It is a status quo budget.
Okay. We got the presentation yesterday. From, let's go from the CAO's budget. Are there things that we want to add back in to reconcile or do we want to move forward with the CAO's budget as it stands?
I request that we take a poll on that and whether we accept the CAO's or whether we accept her requests.
Well, let's just, let's see if we accept the CAO's. If we don't, then we can figure out which part of this request is important. Poll to, poll to accept CAO's without change. Supervisor Toffnelli?
No.
Sure?
No.
Okay. So, Supervisor Toffnelli, how would you, what would you like to suggest?
I would suggest that we go with, on the three line items, 5241, 5289, and 5422 with her requests.
Which represents $33,000 in shift.
Actually, it's about 35,000.
It's 35.
Yes, 35,000.
Is there discussion on this item?
You're right.
Do you want to, and will, shall I, shall I put that forward as a position?
Yeah, the discussion, I, I will point out, if you go to, if you go to her page 176, final net costs, CEO had it 8,000 to 44 minus out her revenue and her net cost was 24,000 to the general fund.
Those weren't the changes that we had contemplated yesterday. I don't believe, I believe those changes were in the district attorney's budget, I mean at 300, so the page to look at here-
I'm sorry, Krista, could you talk in the microphone? I can't hear you.
Sorry, the page to look at here would be 173.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right. I'm looking at 174, yeah, yeah. I jumped ahead of the page is what I did, so. But we're, we're looking to add, yes, $35,000 to her budget per, and I would ask the board on that.
Okay. Everybody okay with having a poll on that? This is adding the 32,000 dollars.
35.
35,000 dollars.
I'm not clear where we're adding it because the 8,000 is going down to 6,000, I mean to 2,000, correct? Because 6,000 comes from CCP.
So, it would be, I would be looking at column five is, is, is what the number should be, so.
Page 173, column five.
173, column five. So, 52, 5422, for instance, would be at 10,000.
But if 6,000 of it CCP, oh, that includes, right, okay. But the general fund contribution is only 4,000.
Correct. The CAO is recommending 8,000.
So, he's giving you more out of general fund?
No. No. It would be 6,000 of CCP plus 2,000 of general fund for a total of $8,000 in the training budget and that is the CAO's recommendation. I'm asking that the 2,000 that I moved over from overtime remain so that that line is at 10.
So, really, the big item is the expert testimony.
That is the big item and I'm asking that that not be cut. We budget for anticipated litigation costs. I budget them in the expert line. You just heard county council pitch-
That's saying the same thing.
Professionalized services. We don't get to outsource, we don't get to contract out with outside attorneys, but we do have expertise, we do have litigation costs and we budget, I think, very reasonably for those costs, year to year and it's only planning. We can't always control what goes to trial and what doesn't go to trial or when an expert's going to be needed or when they're not going to be needed. So, I, I think that the, the 52 is a reasonable amount and again, in-house, we, we separate that out.
Got it.
And I'm asking that that not be cut.
So, I don't know, Krista or Al, why was 20,000 recommended?
As I explained yesterday, I looked at the previous years and looked at what the expenditures were for the previous years. I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't have opportunity to defend cases the way that they need. One of the basis was there hasn't been previous expenditures that, that matched that. The other was, and this may have been my error, but in some of our testimony that in some of the positions we were adding back in, there might be less need for that. But still, at the end of the day, allocating money into that and holding it there when the expenditure pattern in previous years was the reason why that I reduced it out. Quite frankly, it's not a significant issue in, in the overall budget. If it's a binder for the way the DA chooses to prosecute, then that wasn't the intention in much the same way that we had the discussion with the sheriff's office budget. I don't intend to impart my influence on how they manage their departments. I intend to bring back a responsible budget to the board and let you make decisions how you move forward in additional expenditures.
Okay.
So, that was the basis with, with which we started from.
And I can understand that if you're just looking out of context and looking at what was spent year to year, however, we have to plan ahead and I, I would like to point out that that same analysis was not applied to county council's line. You know, if you're looking at her prior years coming in, you did not cut that coming into this, but I understand that part of it could have been timing and the timing of the meetings and the opportunity to explain why we were requesting a certain amount that we're requesting even though the prior year spending may not have reflected that out of context.
I'm going to try to move this along. Ever heard a question or you made a decision?
No, I mean, it's, you know, I understood what Barbara said. I understood this similar scenario for county council's office, but I'm going to go with the CAO's recommendation and that if it comes to needing more for the reasons that the CAO mentioned, that Barbara mentioned, then fine, just come back to the board, which goes back to why can't we have a system except the auditor already told me why we can't. So, I'm going to support the CAO.
Supervisor Mills?
I support Mr. Toffnelli's decision.
Supervisor Stopper?
Toffnelli's decision.
Okay. Here's Ford.
Thank you.
Are there other items on the district attorney's budget? Seeing none, we will move on to environmental management.
I do have two other budget units that we did not discuss, victim witness and the XC, and I think that that is what-
XC 210?
There were no, there were no questions, so I think we're going with the super CAO's budget recommendation.
Oh, I do want to point out that there is a general fund contribution on both of those that will be changing. We're going to be seeking to have the grants eat the cost of the PERS lump sum, so I'm hopeful that that will be helpful.
I think you worked that out with the CAO.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, I did bring up XC 210.
You got everything you want.
I did bring up XC 210 because remember you had four people that were-
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You got everything you wanted.
Hello, Mr. Banner.
Mr. Banner. Are there questions on the environmental management agency's budget or do we want to move ahead with what's suggested by the CAO?
I've got to find, I've got to find here.
First and then if there are no questions, I'll ask if we want to move ahead.
Just very quickly, on page 189, on state aid 45, line 4580, there's a substantial reduction in state aid over last year or even over previous year. Line 4580, right.
Which page?
Uh, page 189, line 4580.
Okay.
It went from 2395 down to 48173. Of course, we only spent 398 last year, so I'm just looking to understand this number.
Yes, I think that's this Carl Moyer thing.
It is.
And so, we have these, Rebecca could probably explain it better, but there's been kind of different ways that that money has shifted between the different budget lines and some different ways of handling it and she seems-
Poof, poof, she appears.
This actually is, is because of realignment. So, realignment changed. When the, when the 2011 realignment occurred, there was a shift in some of the funding that was going to environmental health, so even if you go back, you can see it was even higher than what it was in 16, 17. But then it shifted and then recently it shifted again. So, they were completely cut out from one stream of funding from the state related to realignment, so they have very little that actually comes from that and that's just legislatively how it cookie crumbled.
Should our expectation going into even the next budget years beyond this be more in line with the roughly 200,000 in revenue or what's going to happen there?
No, it should be more in line with what the 40, what's budget of the 48,000. Yeah. And there's no guarantees on that funding either, so if, if legislatively they continue to kind of squeeze down on that revenue component, then they ultimately could be cut out. We've, we've just seen that where there's been a shift at the state level for those realignment funds, we've seen it even happen to probation with some of their juvenile revenue where it's just been cut out completely.
That's a substantial shift.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to bring it up. It's difficult to deal with it.
Supervisor Toffnelli?
Yeah, this is Carl Moyer.
No.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay. Because I would say diesel engine 2020, the, everything changes.
Yeah, so, no, this doesn't have anything to do with air pollution. This has to do with realignment funding that would have come through sales tax and VLF and all of that good stuff.
Supervisor Mills, more questions?
Yeah, on health and sanitation as well as onsite wastewater and environmental health, I know that you had gone through some changes to your fee schedule.
Yes.
Do you think that that will assist in trying to bring you more revenue neutral in the coming budget year?
It's been pretty disappointing, you know. I don't know if we put too many brakes on the increases, but it hasn't been a dramatic change in our revenue. We, we looked at the actual costs and then we did a three-year phase in at 60% cost recovery, 70% and 80%. I think we're going into year three and then we put in a factor where nothing would increase more than 25% in any one year. And so, some of the fees are really- And so, some of the fees are really, they don't really meet the costs. It would have been pretty draconian to, you know, increase them by 800% or something, so.
I understand. I was looking at page 203, and the, and the bottom net cost of 83,427 for onsite wastewater, that, you know, somewhere, we have to work towards being revenue neutral with this whole section.
Right.
And I'm concerned that if we don't get a handle on it, do we have to go back and relook at it again next year or year after to try to decide how we're going to shrink that, because it's not shrinking.
Yes, and it's frustrating. It's frustrating because it's kind of dictated by the business cycle, too. So, we're in a pretty good business cycle now, but that's not necessarily going to stay. If you look at the revenues, a lot of it just comes from septic permits, that's the vast majority of it. And in that regard, I looked just before coming in here, you know, while watching on the video, and the revenues to date, as of today, in, for the septic line, is 191,200, something along that line. And I noticed we budgeted 225,000, so I'm a little nervous about that. This is the busiest time of year, but.
Okay, just, I just wanted to bring it up, that although we're, because I noticed that the recommended for environmental health, that's on page 201, is substantially lower than your department request. Are you going to be able to meet your, your service needs with that kind of reduction?
We've got stable staffing in the onsite department. We've got one person that, that does most of the work. We've got some front office staff backup. We get backup from a person in environmental health, too, that swings in and helps out with some of the inspections. We are down a staff now, but we're going to be attempting to fill it. The first question you had about the significant reduction in revenue, were we talking about the environmental health budget in that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. That's all I have.
Okay. Everybody okay with accepting the CAO's recommended budget on this item? Seeing no objection, I think you're good. All right, we got 12 minutes till noon. Do you think we could do 50% of our county budget through HHS? Not much time.
It's all my General Fund.
Exactly.
There is some General Fund a little bit.
Yeah, there is.
All right. I've seen Kristin work magic before. Let's give it a shot. Questions or specifically changes to the budget, to the CAO's recommended budget, that you guys would like to see?
Well, one of the things that I was looking at was, of course, the CMCAA, since I'm on that board, is are we going to be able to throw some of those costs as a shared cost to Mariposa County, or are we going to bear the full cost ourselves?
Good morning, Kristen Stranger, Health and Human Services. So, the Community Action Agency is actually a community services block grant that we receive from the state, and so that grant itself, that block grant, is, fully funds all activities. It's about $280,000, I believe, in the past year. Yeah, it is. It's about $280,000. It's stayed pretty steady with immaterial changes for the most part, and it does cover all, not only the services that are provided, but also the executive director serving both counties.
So, basically, the funding is coming through our Auditor's Office, and we're handling the entire paper trail for that position.
Exactly, and we did budget the cost to be a fully burdened, excuse me, let me try this again. So, the position, that is the Community Action and Agency Executive Director, where we developed the position last year and added it per the direction of the JPA Board, we budgeted it at a fully burdened cost to be cognizant of all the additional expenses with legal and just basically being a county employee, and so that was considered in the development of the budget for that position.
Are you generating, this is kind of shifting gears a little bit, are you generating anything to work on fleet rotation, considering the number of vehicles you have in your?
We do manage our internal fleet within Health and Human Services.
Right.
If that's the, yes, we do do that, and you'll see, even within our budget, we have a couple of requests for aging vehicles. Does that answer? Yes, yes, we do. We're very mindful of our fleet management.
Okay, so you feel like you're keeping ahead of your, your need in terms of rotating the fleet?
Is it perfect?
No.
No, but we are definitely doing our very best to address it, yes.
You don't have WASP cars.
Yeah, well, and I saw the Sheriff's budget the other day, so.
Okay.
The Sheriff's fleet, I can't really speak too much.
And I'm going to go to page 226. This is operating transfers, and is there going to be a true-up on this, on these revenues? This is total revenues. For this year, it was, I think we budgeted 10,477, but we've received, as of this point, 8,454.
Yeah, Marcos can speak.
So, by the time we get to year-end, we're going to be pretty close to that?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
So, and you're saying 11,694, that's, that's a number that you can live with in revenues?
Yes. Marcos can speak to the individual items.
So, yes, revenue, our revenue in, that was human services we were looking at.
Right.
Is dependent on our expenditure. So, the more we expend, the more revenue we receive. The reason why we have an increase in revenue is because we've had an increase in kiddos and care, in kids that we have taken into care. So, therefore, we're going to have an increase in expenditures, which draws down federal funding and state funding. So, yes, I do believe we will hit that number that we are projecting in the budget. Are we going to hit the number this year? It'll be close. Might be a little short, we actually might come in a little over, but it'll be very close to the number we did put in current year's budget.
Okay. That pretty much is all my questions.
Other questions, or is there any, any changes to the CAO's recommended budget this Board would like to see? Seeing none, I think you're good, Kristin. Moving on to the next item. Actually, you know what? This might be a good time to take a break. What do you guys think? We'll take a, okay, let's return at 1:00. If that's all right, I know it's a little shorter than normal, but I really want to get this done today. Does that work for everybody? Ben? All right, 1:00.